Buenas noches, empezaremos temprano y veremos cómo terminamos a las 8:30. Bienvenidos al segundo pleno de la Cámara de Puestos de las 5 y 7. Hay cuatro candidatos, es el mismo formato que el último pleno. Cada candidato dará un discurso de 2 minutos de abertura y luego tomaremos preguntas de lectores. El formato será el mismo que el de la semana pasada. Vamos en orden aleatorio, alternando quién va primero, segundo, tercero, etc. Los candidatos tendrán 1 minuto para dar sus respuestas y también tienen una de estas cartas azules que pueden usar una vez durante el pleno si quieren interrumpir el pleno. Por favor, como audiencia, no aplaudan o interrumpan a los oradores, ya sea que estén de acuerdo o en desacuerdo, dejemos que ellos se deseen. Y vamos a llegar a tantas preguntas como podemos. Empezaremos desde el lado más izquierdo.
Me escucho. Hola a todos, mi nombre es Crystal Marks. Quiero comenzar diciendo muchas gracias por tomarte tiempo de tus días para venir aquí esta noche y estar tan involucrada en la política de la ciudad, viendo quién va a dirigir la Cámara de Puestos de la ciudad en el futuro. Quiero decirles un poco sobre mí misma. He vivido en Burian durante dos años y medio. Cuando mi esposo y yo nos casamos, nos mudamos de aquí. Y digo de aquí porque él creció aquí, desde los 3 años a los 18. Y luego él salió cuando se unió al ejército. Así que estoy muy contenta de estar aquí con ustedes. Soy una profesional de la carrera de la nonprofit. He trabajado en pequeñas y pequeñas nonprofits de la comunidad enfocadas en la salud mental, la salud de la comunidad y la salud dental. Así que eso significa y eso trae a la mesa para mí como candidata de la Cámara de Puestos es que sé cómo construir puertas, sé cómo hacer mucho con poco. Estos siempre son pequeñas nonprofits, tres o cuatro personas y personal donde tenemos que hacer mucho, tenemos que usar muchos zapatos. Así que sé lo que significa colaborar bien, escuchar, escuchar diversas perspectivas y seguir haciendo cosas. Así que tengo un enfoque en la seguridad. Y lo que eso parece para mí no es necesariamente agregar más policías a la ciudad de Burian, es asegurarnos de tenerlos equipados para hacer su trabajo bien, que somos apoyadores, que tomamos responsabilidad de nuestra propia ciudad así como de los ciudadanos de Burian, y que le damos orgullo a nuestra ciudad. Hay mucho por gozar de en Burian y quiero centrarme en lo positivo. Hay mucho que debe ser abordado, pero hay mucho para celebrar sobre nuestra ciudad que incluye nuestra diversidad, que incluye las muchas personas que viven aquí y llaman Burian a casa, ya sea que hayan estado aquí un año o que hayan estado aquí toda su vida. Así que he estado dirigiendo una plataforma de Burian para todos y eso significa a todos los que viven aquí y llaman Burian a casa, ya sea que sean documentados o no documentados, ya sea que sean residentes de larga edad o han mudado aquí. Tú perteneces aquí y quiero ser una voz para ti. Muchas gracias por venir de nuevo y no puedo esperar a responder a las preguntas esta noche.
Buenas noches, gracias por acompañarnos aquí esta noche. Quiero comenzar diciendoles un poco sobre mí misma. Mi nombre es Patty Janson, estoy dirigiendo la Cámara de Puestos de la ciudad de Burian, posición número 7. He vivido en Burian durante 26 años. Me gradué en Kennedy Catholic. Comprendí un pequeño negocio aquí durante tres años. Durante ese tiempo, mentí en At Risk Youth en el Elaboración de Hazel Valley. Participé en muchos de nuestros eventos de la ciudad, el Festival Strawberry, Clean Sweet, Art Seglo, que es uno de mis favoritos, el show de carros de Navidad, que probablemente es uno de los favoritos de mi esposo, y soy voluntaria con el Departamento de Policía de Burian. He estado voluntariando con ellos durante 19 años. También soy certificada, que es la comunidad, equipo de respuesta de emergencia, así como haciendo presentaciones en la Academia de Policía para reclutar más voluntarios. Strongly believe that crime and safety should be the paramount focus of our city leaders. Las últimas 3 encuestas de la comunidad durante los 6 años mostraron que el crimen y la seguridad son la principal preocupación, pasando de un 27% en 2014 a un 47% en 2016, el más alto que ha sido nunca. Necesitamos fuerte desarrollo económico, comercial de la comunidad para apoyar la base de impuestos necesaria para los servicios de la ciudad. Tenemos muchas cosas maravillosas que están sucediendo aquí en Burian. Este es uno de los ejemplos de eso. Merrill Gardens, The Maverick, Bakery Novo, Northeast Redevelopment Project, que cuando se完entra, agregará 600 trabajos a nuestra comunidad. Espero responder a sus preguntas esta noche, gracias.
Hola, soy Nancy Tosta, gracias por estar aquí. Muchos de ustedes me han visto en la TV en las reuniones de la Cámara porque soy la incumbente que he servido en la Cámara de Puestos durante los últimos 4 años. He trabajado duro como miembro de la Cámara y en cada aspecto del negocio en la comunidad. Estoy dirigiendo de nuevo porque creo que esa experiencia y ese conocimiento son realmente críticos en estos grandes tiempos de incertidumbre y es una pequeña forma de contribuir a la ciudad que amo. He vivido aquí en Burian durante 21 años y he visto muchos cambios. Tenemos desafíos, como cualquier otra ciudad, la inequidad, la desesperanza, la epidemia de la opioid, muchos de esos mismos, aumentar los alquileres. Pero tenemos muchos activos, tenemos un ambiente increíble, un centro downtown que continúa prosperando y creciendo, tenemos gente encargada y involucrada y un lugar fabuloso. Necesitamos líderes como yo que entiendan estos activos y pueden ayudar a construirlos. Hay cinco realidades en nuestra ciudad. Nuestra población ha doblado desde que hemos incorporado, eso es mucho crecimiento. Ha diversificado, solían ser, los blancos solían ser el 75% de nuestra población, ahora es menos del 2/3 de nuestra población. Nuestra población latina ha doblado. El crimen no está aumentando, el crimen es esencialmente lo mismo que ha sido durante los últimos 5 años. ¿Tenemos un problema con el crimen? Sí, necesitamos abordarlo. Ha agregado financiación para la policía, los jóvenes, la arte, los servicios sociales y la tecnología mientras balanceamos nuestro presupuesto durante los últimos 4 años y nuestros negocios son fuertes, hemos aumentado un 12% en el ingreso y los impuestos de ventas. Así que todos queremos sentirnos seguros y prosperar en esta comunidad, pero hay 50,000 de nosotros y casi no podemos estar de acuerdo en nada. Así que mi objetivo es continuar buscando formas de tener discorso civil, para crecer, encontrar un común suelo entre todos nosotros en la comunidad. Gracias por estar aquí.
Hola, Burian, mi nombre es Darla Green y estoy dirigiendo la posición 5. Debido a que muchos votantes de Burian me han pedido y debido a que estoy pasionada por Burian, gracias por venir esta noche y compartir parte de tu noche conmigo. Me gustaría tomar esta oportunidad para decirles un poco sobre mí misma. En mis 47 años aquí, 37 los he gastado en Burian. Soy una madre sola de dos, soy una longtime miembro de la comunidad y voluntaria. Participé en eventos de la comunidad como las fiestas de la antigua ciudad de Burian Black, Clean Sweet, shows de Navidad, Festival Strawberry. También he estado voluntaria con el cuidado de la juventud, que es en el Shelter de la Rama Graham en Seattle. También estoy voluntariando con el Festival Zombie Festival de Nori Park. Soy una oradora frecuente y asistente en las reuniones de la Cámara de Puestos de la ciudad de Burian. Soy una longa persona de la empresa de Burian, 13 años. A través de Skin Perfect, mi negocio, organizo eventos divertidos y charitable y veo a la gente aquí esta noche que ha venido a mis bares de bingo para donaciones de alimentos, para los viajes de comida para los que benefician Transform Burian. Hemos adoptado familias para el Día de Navidad. He logrado crecer mi pequeño negocio incluso a través de la tragedia personal y una recesión en un trabajo proporcionando un ente de ingresos y rendimiento fiscal en la ciudad de Burian. Estoy activamente involucrada en mi ciudad porque Burian necesita liderazgo de la Cámara con un liderazgo en el terreno, así que se puede decir. Burian también necesita líderes que la única preocupación y prioridad es Burian y sus ciudadanos. Como empresaria, he sido roto, he sido asaltada, he tenido que lidiar con las ramificaciones de la vagrancia, el crimen y los dueños ausentes. Estoy orgullosa de la Iglesia de los Oficiales de Policía de King County y juré hacer la reducción del crimen una prioridad. para la seguridad y el bienestar de nuestros vecindarios, esto te lo prometo. He oído de muchos de ustedes que se cansan de las innumerables preguntas, largas reuniones y la discusión perpetua de mi oponente y humildemente pido su voto para cambiar esta ciudad.
Bien, ahora harán las preguntas. En este punto, por favor, no aplaudan o griten o algo para que los candidatos puedan maximizar su tiempo. Tendrán hasta 2 minutos para cada respuesta. Vamos por la línea, así que empezaremos con usted. Y la primera pregunta de lectores es: El término activista ha sido usado bastante recientemente. ¿Cómo se ve un buen activista a usted y cuál es el comportamiento modelo para un activista?
Así que yo he... Oh, tengo el micrófono, así que usualmente puedo hablar sin él, pero vamos adelante y usaremos esto. Yo diría, así que he estado viendo las reuniones de la Cámara de Puestos durante muchos, muchos años. Consideraría a mí misma un activista. Creo que esta pregunta probablemente proviene de alguna preocupación por activistas que han venido con un comportamiento no civil a nuestras reuniones en alterarlos y causar caos, que no es de la ciudad. Yo diría que nosotros aquí somos todos activistas. Esas personas que están dirigiendo tan bien junto a nosotros, los otros cuatro candidatos, también son activistas para mejorar nuestra comunidad.
Así que creo que todos somos activistas, están aquí, están involucrados. Creo que un activista es alguien que se involucra en su comunidad, quien se preocupa, quien está dispuesto a saltar, expresar un punto de vista, pero al mismo tiempo, idealmente, escuchar otros puntos de vista. Creo que los activistas son personas activas que dicen: "Me preocupo, me preocupo lo suficiente para venir, hablar con otros, averiguar lo que piensan y tratar de encontrar un común suelo". Así que para mí, activista no es un término negativo, creo que es positivo. Creo que necesitamos más gente que sea activa en nuestra comunidad y dispuesta a involucrarse.
Creo que hay una diferencia entre activistas y personas que vienen a cerrar nuestras reuniones y para dividir nuestra comunidad, que es lo que ha pasado. Es hora de regresar el discurso civil y eso no incluye que los coches vayan hacia fuera de Burian para cerrar nuestras reuniones. No incluye rastrear grupos de activistas especiales que vienen a gritar, intimidar y amenazar. Es hora de volver al negocio de Burian y eso es de lo que se trata. Tienes un grupo maravilloso de personas dirigiendo, Burian orgullosa, Burian primero, y vamos a regresar a la orden de la ciudad.
En cuanto al activismo, creo que lo que es, es la idea de ver algo y decir algo, pero en lugar de ver algo y decir algo, es ver algo y hacer algo. Así que un activista tiene un lugar en la sociedad porque ahí es donde todo nuestro cambio social ha pasado. Martin Luther King Jr. fue un activista, eso es algo enorme a recordar. Así que pintar a todos activistas con un broche es una cosa desafortunada de hacer y afortunadamente esta noche eso no ha pasado, así que es fantástico y es un ejemplo que todos podemos escuchar unos a otros y aprender. Soy un activista. Soy un activista porque decidí comenzar una organización de voluntariado para hacer la extinción de los desesperados, para hacer la recogida de las llaves, para enseñar clases gratuitas sobre la defensa de sí misma y la intervención de los ciudadanos que lo necesitan. Todavía lo hago, todavía lo hago gratis. Eso es algo en lo que creo porque, de nuevo, soy un activista. Así que cuando oigo cosas como "no queremos que vengan a entrar de fuera", bueno, por supuesto que no. Nadie quiere que la gente venga a entrar de fuera para alterar una reunión, a menos que haya un tema que hace que la gente se sienta tan pasionada que sientan la necesidad de venir por sí misma, pero la gente no necesita que vengan. Cuando estamos hablando de reuniones de la Cámara de Puestos que han sido alteradas, son por residentes de Burian que han manifestado. Como residente de Burian, creo que deberíamos animar a la gente a sentirse pasionada sobre estas cuestiones de la ciudad. Creo que deberían hacerlo de tal manera que nadie sea afectado, pero creo que debería ser animado a hablar cuando escuchas algo que se opone a quien eres, que amenaza a los miembros de la sociedad. Creo que esa es la definición de un activista.
Esta fue una pregunta de la semana pasada, no teníamos tiempo antes, así que voy a hacer estas preguntas. El lector quería saber si hay algo en el presupuesto de la ciudad que ustedes rechazarían y por qué.
Interesante pregunta. Tenemos un presupuesto muy lean, como todos ustedes que han visto las reuniones de la Cámara saben. Y de hecho, si han visto la reunión de la Cámara de Puestos la noche pasada, tuvimos una visión general de nuestro ajuste medio-termal de 2017-2018. La ciudad está haciendo bien ahora. Dije hace un minuto que los ingresos están aumentando un 12% en los impuestos de ventas, que es una de nuestras principales fuentes de ingresos, los ingresos de la proporción de impuestos de propiedad también. Kim Kraus, que es nuestra directora financiera, es fabulosa. Ha ganado numerosos premios por sus habilidades financieras, reconocida como líder en su campo y tengo una tremenda confianza en ella. Yo llevo el presupuesto de la ciudad. Esto es algo de mi Biblia para saber cuando la gente me hace preguntas sobre qué estamos financiando o de dónde viene ese financiamiento. Así que, ¿hay algo que yo rechazaría? Somos lean y no creo que pueda pensar en nada. Hay muchas más cosas que me gustaría hacer. No creo que financien algunas de nuestras actividades de play ground, por ejemplo, potencialmente algunas de nuestras actividades de seguridad pública. Hay muchas otras cosas que me gustaría ver hacer, así que no, no hay nada que yo rechazaría. Una larga manera de llegar a la respuesta.
Actualmente llevo el presupuesto también, lo he revisado, mirado. Rechazar algo, en realidad, no, no ahora. Creo que necesitamos volver y encontrar los programas que funcionan para la mayoría de la gente y asegurarnos de que los programas que no funcionan a la mayor capacidad deben ser reevaluados y ahí es donde dejaré.
Así que estaré de acuerdo hasta ahora, ese es el beneficio de ir en tercer lugar. No hay nada que yo rechazaría en este momento. En cambio, me gustaría centrarme en tomar decisiones inteligentes mientras trabajamos en el presupuesto para que en el futuro no tengamos que mirar qué debemos rechazar y tener esas decisiones de emergencia. Creo que es realmente importante poder ser una buena comunicadora, ser una buena oyente y tener una buena relación con el gerente de la ciudad y el director financiero para que estemos tomando decisiones fiscamente responsables y justas que duran a largo plazo. Y yo también me encantaría ver que el ingreso aumente y tomarlo un paso más allá de una manera que no involucre una impositura aún más pesada sobre las personas que viven aquí y especialmente sobre nuestros negocios. Si podemos encontrar otras redes de ingresos, creo que sería fantástico, lo que abordaría el tener que cortar programas, eso es lo que enfocaría en cambio.
No puedo pensar en nada que yo rechazaría, pero me gustaría mirar el presupuesto y tal vez ajustar algunos de los programas. En un poco más de un año, vamos a perder un crédito de impuestos como ciudad para la zona de la ciudad de North High Line. Vamos a tener que dar un mirar duro cuando se trata de eso. Y creo que cuando se trata de eso, probablemente hay algunas cosas que podrían ser ajustadas. Y cualquiera que posea un hogar sabe que en su presupuesto de hogar, cuando tiene un préstamo, puede haber algunas cosas que cortar si se acerca un mes. Así es exactamente como la ciudad debería responder y dejar algo de dinero fuera sabiendo que esto está llegando.
Bien, esta es una pregunta de Merrill Gardens, diciendo o preguntando. Muchos residentes hacen mucho compras en el Bartels y el residente dice que la 4ª y la 6ª Avenida Surweste se han vuelto muy peligrosas. ¿Cómo se haría creando un parque de caminos?
Estoy de acuerdo, estuve parada en el viejo Staples, no sé cómo se llama ahora, y traté de cruzar la calle, ellos se estaban acercando. Primero, creo que necesitamos hablar con nuestro departamento de policía. Necesitamos, necesitamos regresar a los policías que captan speeders en toda Burian y que necesitamos mirar el presupuesto para eso. Creo que es realmente necesario para este grupo de personas.
En cuanto a crear parques de caminos marcados, hubo alguien en otro pleno o debate, no, me estoy olvidando de dónde fue, pero ellos estaban mencionando cómo crearon su propio. Creo que fue Joel, fue Joel, en realidad Joel Manning. Pensé que era una idea fantástica. Y básicamente lo que consiste es poner banderas en ambos lados de la calle y ser capaz de crear ese tipo de, foster ese tipo de participación y involucramiento de la comunidad y decir: "Hay un problema aquí, vamos a corregirlo". Pero también necesitamos colaborar con la ciudad de Burian y decir: "Bien, ¿qué hacemos con esta área? Tenemos informes de que es un área peligrosa, especialmente para nuestros seniores que han acercado aquí, queremos hacerlos sentir bienvenidos. Necesitamos asegurarnos de que nuestros hijos sean seguros cuando cruzan la calle. Las personas que vienen del centro de transición o van a trabajar desde el centro de transición también son seguros. Queremos hacer que esta sea una ciudad bienvenida, eso debe ser una prioridad". Así que creo que la participación de la comunidad, aumentarla, animar ese tipo de iniciativa, trabajar con la ciudad para ver qué es lo que podemos hacer que esté dentro de los límites legales para asegurarnos de que poner algunas banderas no es malo, no creo que sea. Joel, creo que fue fantástico. Pero creo que esos son los pasos que deberíamos tomar para eso, así como mirar sobre el zonaje o sobre la propiedad, qué puede hacer el negocio para ayudar a hacer esa área más segura también. Tienen un rol en la comunidad, así que qué pueden hacer los negocios alrededor de ellos para sumarse a eso.
Así que la seguridad de la carretera lateral realmente llegó a la cabeza este año en la 1ª Avenida y cerca de 126, hubo un atropello fatal hace 7 meses. Hubo otro atropello fatal hace 4 meses, cruzado por el centro de la artes de la ciudad de Highline. Definitivamente necesitamos algo, pero hay muchas áreas en nuestra ciudad que necesitan la atención y el foco. Así que creo que va a tomar más que, no ofende Joel, poner banderas. También tenemos, muchos de ustedes pueden no saber esto, tenemos un trailer de velocidad y podemos configurarlo en ciertas áreas que son sensibles a los speeders y actúa como un detergente. Así que podemos configurarlo y con suerte detener algunos de los speeders, pero es algo que debe ser mirado y trabajando con nuestro departamento de trabajo público y identificando las áreas más críticas. Yo misma me gustaría ver uno de esos parques de caminos brillantes en las áreas críticas, como tenemos en Ambom y cerca de 126, así que...
Bien, ¿cuál es su...?
Está bien, podemos pasar adelante. Así que he tenido numerosos peticiones, no para estas intersecciones específicas, sino para otras intersecciones en la comunidad y en otras carreteras que son ocupadas en los vecindarios. Y he llevadolo a nuestro director de trabajo público y he dicho: "Hay mucha preocupación en este vecindario, ¿no podríamos poner un parque de 4 vueltas aquí? O ¿no podríamos poner puentes de velocidad?" Y no os daré sus palabras exactas, pero básicamente se limita al estudio técnico y las especificaciones y los estándares nacionales y así sucesivamente. No es algo trivial tratar con el manejo de la tráfico. Pero creo que hay algunas formas muy creativas. He visto otras ciudades hacer esto y no hemos probado aquí en Burian, pero no sé si han visto en Portland, han pintado en realidad las intersecciones, han creado arte en la intersección y es un mecanismo que obliga a la gente a lentirse un poco porque quieren ver lo que ha ocurrido allí, así que añade alguna creatividad a la comunidad. Pero creo que definitivamente en estas áreas donde tenemos una población vulnerable, ya sea niños o si son seniores, deberíamos poner especial énfasis en que son parques de caminos brillantes, puentes de velocidad antes de la intersección, parques de 4 vueltas, si vas a otras ciudades importantes, frecuentemente encuentras que hay parques de 4 vueltas en muchas intersecciones, lo que lenta el tráfico en general. Así que esas son algunas sugerencias.
Bien, una pregunta repetida, ¿cuál es su libro favorito que ha leído recientemente?
Recientemente leído, pensé que era de siempre. Bien, el libro favorito que he leído recientemente, lo he leído porque mis hijos han estado leyendo, pero Harry Potter. Y aquí es por qué, es porque valoro, valoro la fosteración de la imaginación en los niños. Valoro la fosteración, o lo que eso brinda a la luz, cómo lo anima a las artes para ellos. Me anima a la escritura, me anima a más lectura. Soy presidenta de una junta de artes en el centro de Seattle para el teatro de improv. Así que para mí, la arte y la comunidad de las artes es realmente, realmente importante. Así que algo como, algo ficción y es un libro de niños, pero les hace involucrar, les hace involucrar en la fosteración de una pasión por la lectura y creo que es realmente importante. Volvió a lo que creo en términos de aumentar la participación y además es solo divertido. Con un nombre como el mío y nadie está feliz, así que, ahí va.
La Biblia. Y eso es porque la fe es mayor que mis miedos.
Así que mi escape es ficción científica y acabo de terminar una serie llamada La Tierra Aberrada por NK Jemison. Si les gusta la ficción científica, les animo mucho a leerla. Uno de mis otros pasiones, aunque las voy a dar dos, así que esa es ficción, una ficción no ficción. Uno de mis pasiones es el sistema alimentario y cómo creamos un sistema alimentario saludable y menos impacto en el medio ambiente y la agricultura haciendo la vida y todo ese tipo de cosas. Pero un libro llamado El Tercer Plato por Dan Barber. También soy una científica por la educación y es mucho sobre cómo cultivamos la comida, cómo la comida se siente basada en el suelo en el que se cultiva, cómo garantizamos la sostenibilidad en el sistema alimentario. Así que animo tanto a los dos libros, la serie La Tierra Aberrada y El Tercer Plato por Dan Barber.
Estoy leyendo actualmente Atlas Shrugged por Amran, un libro fantástico. Movie no tan buena, el libro es genial.
Bien, una pregunta de negocio. La pregunta es: ¿Cómo creamos incentivos para los pequeños y los locales para evitar que Burian se convierta en una ciudad de franquicia?
Me encanta que Burian tenga pequeños negocios. Esta es una gran comunidad, pero necesitamos una mayor base de impuestos de negocios para financiar los programas mientras crecemos como ciudad. Creo que hay cosas que podemos hacer para modificar algunas de las circunstancias que tenemos sobre los pequeños negocios. Pero nuestro impuesto de negocios vendrá de negocios mayores, como NIRA, Northeast Redevelopment Area.
Así que los pequeños negocios son el corazón de la cultura aquí en Burian. Creo que es una de las cosas que muchos de nosotros amamos. La forma en que incentivamos a los pequeños negocios, así que tomemos esto, podemos hablar de zonas de desarrollo de negocios o distritos de innovación o otras posibles soluciones gubernamentales, pero también podemos hablar de por qué no frecuentamos nuestros pequeños negocios porque lo que necesitan los pequeños negocios es negocio y así necesitamos darles ese negocio. El impuesto de ventas que paga nuestro ingreso de la ciudad viene de ellos ser capaces de llevar a cabo, ya sea un restaurante, ya sea una librería. Así que hay una variedad de formas. Podemos hacerlo desde el lado gubernamental, pensando en distritos especiales que crearíamos donde los impuestos se reducen como parte de un incentivo. Podemos pensar en reducir algunas de las tarifas de parking, que son uno de los problemas con los que hemos estado lidiando ahora mismo. Está en la Comisión de Planificación, vamos a oírlo en la Cámara en las próximas semanas y es algo que hemos estado mirando durante los últimos años. Pero diría que nuestros negocios triunfan, nuestros pequeños negocios, porque los visitamos y los apoyamos. Así que es realmente importante, es un esfuerzo de la comunidad para ayudar a nuestros pequeños negocios a prosperar.
Bueno, como empresaria, te estoy diciendo que no me siento apoyada por Burian. El crimen es fuera de control. Tus pequeños negocios, para triunfar, necesitan sentirse seguros y tener a sus clientes pasar por sus puertas y ellos no. Tenemos llaves, tenemos desvanez, tenemos crimen, estamos siendo roto. Necesitamos que nuestra ciudad salte. Lo que estamos haciendo no funciona. Ahora, tenemos un amor, maravilloso centro downtown de pequeños negocios. De hecho, Burian es casi todos los pequeños negocios. core of small businesses. In fact, Burian is almost all small businesses. We do need a bigger tax base. And maybe the downtown core isn't the right place to put a franchise, for example, but maybe in Boulevard Park. We need, we need to address some of these issues, and that's going to come from tax revenue. And in order to have tax revenue, you have to have economic development. Crime reduction and economic development go hand in hand. You cannot have one without the other. And we can pretend that these issues don't exist, and then nothing happens, and then we're still in this boat. It's time to address it. We gotta make Burian a destination location, and that starts with economic development.
I would like to echo something, a concern that I've gotten a lot when I've been out knocking on doors, has been, for the few small business owners whose doors that I have knocked on, which has been fantastic to talk to them, they have mentioned the parking fees and the exorbitant cost of adding just a parking space. If you want to rezone your business into something different, if you've taken over that lease, you've moved in, and you need X amount of parking spaces, that's a lot of money. That's discouraging for a new business to come in and flip that space into something that works for them. I think that does need to be looked at. I think in order to incentivize more small businesses, or to keep the ones that we have, that we love, I think we also need to, as city council, as city government, is to celebrate those small businesses. And what that looks like is more things, like what we're doing with, you know, A Taste of Burian, like Burian Bites, getting people involved, advertising more about what's going on in our city, so we bring more people in. That not only brings in revenue for these businesses, it builds, it raises the profile of Burian. It shows that we have a charming downtown core, and it can attract new people to move here as well, which is fantastic with, again, as I mentioned, there are so many people that have moved here that are brand new to Burian, and they've moved here because of that small-town feel, because of our downtown area. I don't think that large franchises are right for our city. That doesn't mean that I'm right. That just means that's my opinion. That's where I'm coming from. I think it's important to ask our small business owners, ask the people who are bringing in such a high tax base for us, bringing in that revenue, what they think, and get the feedback from them before we make decisions. That's a lot of what I've committed to, is getting feedback from the people that are impacted first. The idea of "Nothing About Me, Without Me" extends not just from, from a social justice perspective, but it extends into common sense business practices as well.
So this reader asks, "What do you see as the role of the city in supporting its schools?" And I think they mean public schools, but it says schools, so if you want to talk about non-public schools, that's fine. So it's a good question. Many people make decisions about whether to move to cities based on the quality of the education. Highline School System is a particularly challenged school system. Used to be one of the best in the region. These days, it's not considered that. It covers four cities and part of an unincorporated area, which makes it very difficult to try to raise money for bonds, but we luckily passed one last year. I have had several meetings with the superintendent of schools to ask exactly this question. How can the city, the city council, work more closely with the school system to give kids more opportunities? We, as a city, have offered after-school programs at many of the schools. So we give kids a place to play basketball and engage in other actions. I would like to see us actually do more trade development, skill development in after-school programs, and the city contribute to that as part of an economic development strategy. Actually have a meeting tomorrow morning with the principal of Highline High School to talk about ways that the kids that end high school might better engage in learning how the community, how the council works, the ways we make decisions. I've taught a couple of classes at Highline High School, the civics classes, and have found that to be a very rewarding opportunity to have both what's going on in the city explained to the kids and have the kids explain to some of us in the city what their concerns are. So I, I think there are opportunities more to be explored. Shared facilities are a big one. I know we're looking at in the future as the school system built out its new schools.
Could you repeat the question, please?
What do you see as the role of the city in supporting its schools?
I think one of the key things we can do is keep our streets safe, reduce our crime. Also, I'd like to really see a youth complex, some type of recreational facility that would be a driving point or a mecca for our children. They need to have something to do and a safe place to go. I think that's a great start.
I was recently endorsed by the Highline Educators Association. These are our teachers, these are our staff that work in the Highline School District, who teach our children, who take care of them during the day. So it's really important to me to call out that they are invested in what happens in Burian. So that means Burian needs to be invested in the lives of our children and in the teachers that are teaching here within our city limits. So what can we do for them? I think a lot of it comes back to seeking teacher input. What are you hearing are the biggest concerns in your class? What is, what is the homelessness rate of your students? I know from recent numbers that the number was around 1,200 students in the Highline School District were homeless in the 2015 cycle. So that's too many. That is over 1,000 students, too many that are homeless. So we need to be focusing a little bit more on what are the social service programs that we have in place that can take care of those kids before they fall through the cracks and before they get themselves into trouble, before they turn to things that they don't need to be turning to, all because they are dealt a poor hand in life. I think that's huge. As a city, we should be taking an active role in that. I think we also need to be supporting after-school programs. And I, having worked in apprenticeship at a nonprofit, I'm a huge proponent of building skills. Not every student wants to go straight from high school into college. Not every student is necessarily able to finish high school, sometimes for those reasons of homelessness or other at-home activities or situations that we don't know about. If we can equip them with skills that allow them to be a productive member of society, have pride in what they're doing, have skills that they can take with them anywhere else, I think that'd be fantastic. And the city is situated so well with a skills center to be able to provide that for our students. I think we owe it to the children who are born here, who are raised here, who are living here, whose parents are here working for them, to provide them with as much opportunity as possible.
I spoke briefly in my opening statement about being part of a mentor program at Hazel Valley Elementary. That's been some time ago, but that mentoring program, I had the same child, fourth, fifth, and sixth grade. Met with her once a week. We had lunch, or we would go to the library and we would read. I also did outside activities with her as well. I would like to see this, since I've not been doing it for some time, I'd like to see it brought forward, so promoted by the city and by the district. I think it means a lot to have a positive role model in a child's life that is going through some really, really hard, difficult times. And just speaking to the young person that I had, she really, she had a hard time in life. So I'd like to see that promoted and brought forward. Also, Al Taurus, at the time, it was Vintage Park, also had an after-school program. I would like to see that brought back as well. There were volunteers. This is really volunteer-based, and I think we have a lot of people in our community that care a lot and could get involved and volunteer. Doesn't have to be a paid program. We can get volunteers involved in this.
Next question from this reader is about Lake Burian. Reader asks, or says, "Lake Burian is owned and maintained by the state, but entirely surrounded by private properties. Do you support opening Lake Burian for public access?"
Oh, this subject. Okay. So really, we have to be realistic about this. Lake Burian is not going to be open to the public. It's not fiscally responsible for the city the size of Burian. We're talking imminent domaining people's property and then having to maintain it, staff it, find parking for it. It's not gonna happen. I'm sorry. And I live three blocks from there, and I don't know anybody on Lake Burian that I can go jump in that lake, and it's unfortunate. It's not my right. But I think that we can make the Lake Burian property owners become more fiscally responsible for the upkeep of that lake. It's important to them, and they want to keep it their lake. That's what they pay for. There's a way to do it, but I'm not gonna spend our taxpayer dollars to imminent domain people's property. And then more money for a parking lot. And then more money to maintain it. And the liability, don't forget about the liability, about when someone drowns. Don't forget about that. So I know that's not the most popular answer for some of you here, but it is the real
I think that there have been so many people, this was one of the most hot button, not issues, but things that was asked of me when I was door-knocking in the primaries, "What are you gonna do about the lake?" And it was kind of done in a joking manner of, "Will I ever get to see it? What does it look like? Is the water blue? Is it green? Is it gross? What is it like?" I think it's important to note that, I agree with a bit of what Darla just said, in that it's not the most high-priority project that we need to be focusing on. However, it is Lake Burian. It's not Lake My Backyard. It would be nice for people could see what it looks like, people could experience it. It is also a really important spot for migratory birds. So it's something that should be, if you are at all environmentally minded, that we should be taking care of. We should make sure that this is a good, healthy environmental spot. So if we do look at opening it up, it might be nice to open it up in a manner that is for conservation purposes, to allow conservation groups to come in, to study the area, to see what birds come through, to make it an educational spot. So it's not necessarily a public park, but it's something that is done on a project basis. And that's something that could be explored. What would that look like? I'm not saying I have the answers for that, but I think that would be a really good balance of protecting our local environment, knowing what we have coming through with those birds, and allowing some people, especially our youth, that they're interested in environmental causes, to gain access to the lake as well.
This has been an issue of Burian for almost as long as I've lived here, 26 years. I don't live on Lake Burian. I don't live close enough to the lake to see the lake. But I've driven around a lot. I've seen it. It's not real big. So to Darla's point, are we gonna take people's homes to develop, like a sandy beach area where people can play, and then a parking lot? It, it doesn't, it doesn't make sense. Honestly, having lived here for 26 years, this really hasn't been a burning issue for me, to be able to access Lake Burian.
So this, it's interesting that you asked this question in the election four years ago. It seemed like it came up all the time, and it's the first time I've heard it in recent years. I guess we do have bigger issues to deal with. So it is privately owned. It is too bad. In Washington State, many of the water bodies are privately owned. Even Puget Sound Shoreline is predominantly privately owned, not like California, where far more people have access to public beaches. Lake Burian was subdivided, 100, I don't know what the exact date is, but many years ago, and it was sold as private development. The water is shallow, so it does experience algal blooms at times. It can easily be impacted by use and by animals and other folks that get in the water. There was a vacant lot on one corner of it for a while, I believe the southeast corner. And I've been told by the city when I've asked about this, that there were many people using it. They did have problems with drugs, and it is an issue in terms of trying to maintain it. I have made the suggestion, and it's similar to what Crystal just mentioned, it is a migratory bird habitat, and it's a significant migratory bird habitat. So I've thought, could you put some sort of a viewing platform on one end of the lake if you had a vacant lot? The city would have to buy it. I wouldn't propose it for imminent domain. It's not a high priority. But could you have some way that people could see the birds, not necessarily have access to the water, which potentially would cause more pollution, but that would be sort of a compromise, if you will, from the folks that feel like they'd like to be able to use it. But it is privately owned. Okay, we have a low-income housing question. According to the Housing Development Consortium, whose members include all, all of King County nonprofit housing developers, as well as major banks, architects, attorneys, and government agencies, Burian needs 1,054 more homes for people who make between 0 and 30% of the average median income. How are we going to address that gap?
I think the low-hanging fruit on addressing that gap is requiring any new developments to have low-income housing units set aside. I think that's a huge part of it, to make sure that whoever is coming in understands that they are buying into our community, that they are here to, to provide units for people to live in, yes, and they're making money off of us. So we need to make sure that they also are taking care of our community members that live here currently, and are setting aside units that are for low-income renters. I think it's also important to, to build up our social services here within this city. We mentioned last, or it was mentioned last night at the city council meeting, that part of the money that we have set aside goes towards people that are in our community that are about to experience homelessness, that are experiencing homelessness, that are on that verge of no longer being able to live where they have lived for a long time. I think that needs to be built up as well, to help address that. The more that we can do to help people when they're struggling and before they end up on the street, I think the better. And that frees up even more of the low-income units that we have. We're able to keep people in their homes instead of having to focus on rehousing them. I think that is a top priority. And again, making sure that any new buildings that come in have a set-aside number of units that would help us fill that gap.
So Burian has met their targets in our comprehensive plan for affordable housing. We are one of the highest in the county of affordable housing. So we, many of you who have lived here a long time, one of the main reasons that Burian Incorporated was because King County was putting a lot, or majority, of the affordable housing here in the city of Burian, which was then unincorporated. To Nancy's point, if it's a suggestion, that's one thing. We can't demand property owners in a real estate market that we have. We can't demand property owners in a real estate market like we have today, because the real estate market is very good. If we force them into making affordable housing, they'll sell and they'll leave. That diminishes the affordable housing. It doesn't increase it.
We have a housing crisis going on right now, and it's partly because we are experiencing such phenomenal job growth in Seattle. One of the repercussions of Amazon being in Seattle is the creation of 7,000 new jobs without accompanying available housing. And we're seeing this in Burian now. People are, the wave of new residents coming into our community, the increase in property values in our community, because many of these folks cannot find housing in Seattle. Housing should be affordable. It should be reasonable. Nobody should be paying more than 30% of their income towards a place to live. That's what the sort of national guidelines are. So I think whatever we can do to incentivize, we don't have any major new developments, housing developments planned in Burian in the near future that I'm aware of. I know we have some new senior housing going in. But this is an ongoing challenge. Council has been getting emails from folks that live in apartments where the landlords are raising the rents 50 to 80%. And these are individuals on fixed incomes, and they have no place to go. We need more housing, and it's going to be a community effort to try to figure out. to try to figure out where we put it and how we make it affordable and reasonable to everybody.
I was essentially just looking into this, and I want to let you guys know that affordable housing is extremely important. It's very valuable and we need to support our community members. But it's also important to note that per the King County Regional Housing Authority, Burian has more than met its target for affordable housing. Per HUD standards, most of our housing in Burian is considered affordable. Burian has the most affordable housing out of all of King County. What is missing is the middle-class value housing. Government has no business in private enterprise. This can only lead to rent control, which is something my opponent would favor. That would be disastrous for Burian. Also, I want to let you know the best thing we can do to encourage affordable housing is to get people jobs. The median income for Burian is at $52,000, but compared to King County at $90,000. So something's wrong, right? We need to have people to be able to afford to purchase, rent, or buy a house. So it's about jobs, it's about jobs. Economic development, that is what Burian needs, that is what Burian needs the very most. That's where I'll leave at.
My opponent attributes behavior and points of view to me when she has no idea what I think, has never talked to me about it. I am not a proponent of rent control, I don't, in fact, I'm not even sure it's legal in the state of Washington. I do think we could look at some options for trying to protect tenants from significant rent increases, like 80% increases, and asking people to... No, that's not rent control, you don't know what rent control is. So let me, if you give me a chance, I'll explain it. If a landlord proposes to raise your rent 10%, example, hypothetical, you have a month to find a new place to live. If your landlord proposes to raise your rent 25%, let's ask him to give you two months to find a place to live. Let's be reasonable, if he's going to raise it 80%, let's give you a little bit longer to find a place to live, because it's a challenge. I'll stop.
The next question is about the city's strategic plan, 2017 through 2020. And the person wants to know, what is the city doing really well and maybe not so well towards fulfilling its strategic plan?
So in regards to strategic planning, okay. Economic development, it's the heartbeat of our city, and it's a heartbeat that needs to be recognized. We have never met that strategic planning goal. We need to address our crime, and that in turn is going to help our economic development, and that in turn is going to help us meet all of our strategic goals. It's time to reevaluate our budget, again, programs that are working and programs that aren't. It's time to have a council that works together and not at each other for personal agendas or political grandstanding. It's time to come back to the business of Burian, and that is what I would focus on for strategic planning.
I think to actually put a specific to that, I mean, that means we need to look for, what we need to do better about strategic planning is looking at, what does the next 20 years look like as opposed to the next four? So the long-term plan for Burian, so that we're able to make really good, sound financial decisions, we're able to build a budget that helps to support those plans and helps to actually achieve a lot of those goals. I think what the city is doing well so far is they are, there is a plan in place, it is being discussed, and programs are being evaluated based on how it impacts and fits into the strategic plan. That's very important. As a nonprofit professional, we have to do strategic plans every year. We create it, we evaluate it, we see what's working, and we adjust course. So that's something that I think the city is starting to do a lot better, is adjusting course. At a meeting a couple months ago, that was a topic that was up for discussion. But I think what needs to be done better is making it a longer-term plan and breaking it down into attainable goals, where if those goals are not being met, we are immediately adjusting course on why are they not getting met, and they're not brushed off and pushed on to the next meeting. I know that we can do better as a city, as a city council, to hit these goals. I think a lot of that involves where our values are. It's less about the plan itself, it's more about how the council works together to get things done, whether they're able to build bridges with each other and work across, as Darla mentioned, across different political alignments. But it's also hearing back more from the city on what do you actually need? We need to bring our citizens that live here more into the planning process, letting people know, we are looking forward for the next 20 years, what do you want to see for your city? What does it look like? What do you think over in Boulevard Park? What do you think in Gregory Heights? What are areas that need improvement? And how can we work together to make those improvements happen? And then actually hold ourselves accountable for that through regular feedback from the city, where we are saying, here's what we've done, and here's where we want to keep going.
I would say so far, what they're doing right is being financially responsible. Nancy spoke to Ms. Kraus, she has received many awards. But I think we do need to look at the future, going forward, for the city. We will be in a crunch if we're not planning for that tax credit. I don't know behind the scenes what's going on, I'm not there. I'm pretty sure she's been awarded the things that she has, that they're taking a look at it, but it's not very transparent, I guess is the thing that I'm hoping for. Business economic development is going to be our engine. And that's, there's no other way to say it. There's no other way to pay for services that we need as a growing city unless we have a larger tax base.
We actually talked about this at council last night, and you can find the strategic plan on the city's website, it's also in the budget. The one that we're working with now is 2017 to 2020. When we proposed this a couple years ago, I was concerned that we weren't looking far enough out. And part of that concern was addressed earlier this year, we did a retreat, and one of the things we added to our strategic plan was, let's do some more visioning, let's look 20 years out. I actually brought my mug, I don't know how many of you have one of these, that says, "City of Burian, Washington, Making the Vision Happen." This was from about 15 years ago, when we sat down as a community and we visualized this, what's going on right around us. We've accomplished that, but what's next? We don't have a plan, we don't have a plan for 153rd, for Ambar, for Boulevard Park, for other neighborhoods, and we need that. Otherwise, we're making decisions piecemeal. We'll put something here, we'll do something there. This took a concerted effort to think about what our downtown should look like. We are doing well on economic development, we are a destination city. I can't tell you how many events I go to, and there are more people from out of town at those events than there are Burianites. It's music events, it's our restaurants. So we are doing very well on economic development, we could do a little better on visioning. When we talked about our budget last night, I asked our finance director to highlight in the budget all the places where the actions in the strategic plan were being addressed. So she will bring that back to us, we are following what is in the strategic plan.
What is your opinion on safe injection sites anywhere within Burian or unincorporated White Center?
So this has been a, whether you're on Facebook or Nextdoor, any sort of social media in Burian, chances are you've seen a lot of the arguments go back and forth, and there's a lot, it's heated, it's an important issue. And my stance has been and still is that safe injection sites are up for debate yet. That's a big part of it. King County has yet to push for this. There's been a lot of complaints from the community members about the council focusing on things that they shouldn't focus on, wasting time on issues that are of little impact, that are just grandstanding, that are on social issues that don't matter, and we shouldn't be focusing on that. This is where I see this is at this moment. Because at this time, King County has mentioned, or has said, they will not put a site in a side of a city unless that city approves it. So until the county is at a place where they are ready to implement these sites, I don't feel like it is the best use of our time to spend time debating it and going over it, when we do have important issues that are here at our doorstep currently, such as addressing crime and safety in Burian, and improving the lives of our homeless, and protecting our business owners from vandalism, protecting our citizens from male theft. There's a lot here to worry about, I feel like it's borrowing trouble. Beyond that, where I stand on safe injection sites is currently, I am not, it's not something that I think is best for our city at this time based on what they come along with. I think there needs to be more services attached. I think we do need to look at places that will help get needles off of our streets, which is a big part of that. But I don't think that there's something, I don't think that the way that they're presented right now, with the information that I have at least, is something that is good enough for our city. I think we can do better, I think that we can demand better from county, and I think that we should demand better.
I'm not as trusting of King County. There's a lot of things that they say they're not going to do that gets slid under the table, and guess what, they're here. So I'm not in favor of it, but if our King County executive Dow Constantine wants to place a safe injection site in or around Burian, in our neighbor's backyard in White Center, I'm not in favor of that. However, I would be in favor of them taking the money they're looking to allocate for this on treatment. Treating those with the addiction, I think, is very, very important, more so than enabling the behavior.
So I've read the report, these are just a few pages from it, the Heroin and Prescription Opiate Addiction Task Force Formal Report and Recommendations. And it proposes two sites, one in Seattle and one somewhere else where there are significant drug overdoses. I don't think that's Burian at this point. We do know we have a drug problem here. We have heard the folks that work our regional library system say that they see a lot of this in our library. I'm an options person, I want to know what King County is offering. If they're just proposing a safe injection site, I am not for that. If they are offering services that would help provide treatment, help get people tied into social services and addiction counseling, help provide additional police if this were to create a situation where we were attracting more people to our community who needed these services. So if that was a package, I would be interested in considering it. Our young people need help. I have a personal family, my youngest brother died of an overdose, it wasn't heroin, but it was prescription drugs. I understand what this does to families, it is a disease and we need to treat it. If we could have some sort of a facility that was associated with Highline Hospital, with Franciscan, or with Kaiser, or with Novos, why wouldn't we offer that to our kids? These are some of our kids in this community that this is impacting. All the other countries in the world that have tried this, that are documented in here, have talked about decreased disruption on the streets, decreased litter, decreased deaths, decreased diseases. So it shows it works, but we're a small community, we don't have the infrastructure to just support a safe injection site without all the other prevention and treatment aspects of it that we need to have.
I'm going to be very clear with you. Under no circumstances would I ever vote to put an enabling, illegal heroin injection site in Burian. And in fact, I would lobby hard, I would lobby hard against King County Council for doing this to us. I don't know if any of you have been to East Hastings in Vancouver, B.C., but I have. And it is disturbing. It's incredibly sad, is what it is. It's 10 blocks, and for us Burianites, that's like going from Kentucky Fried Chicken to the Tin Room, okay, 10 blocks, both sides of the streets, and hundreds, hundreds of people littering the streets, open-air drug use. There's no businesses there other than meth clinics, safe injection sites, so-called safe injection sites. They sit on top of the SRO district, which is Single Residency Occupancy Units. These are people that are not, they're not being helped. They're being enabled, and now you know what? Their drug overdoses have gone up. This is a proven fact, the study has come out. And now you know what Vancouver, B.C. is trying to do to those taxiing citizens? They're trying to give them heroin to give to the drug addicts. This is crazy. We need treatment on demand, that's what we need. And if Seattle would stop pushing their political agenda and start helping their people, then we in turn can help our people too. And that's what it's about, absolutely not, I'd go no.
Okay, now you're a tour guide. You're a tour guide to a group of people visiting from out of town, college-age students from the East Coast. What three places would you take them to in Burian?
Seahurst Park, that would be number one. It is our hidden gem here in our community. We don't like to tell people from out of town that we have that little hidden gem, but Seahurst Park, for sure. Any one of our fun restaurants. We are, we have such a great collection of unique restaurants here. I haven't tried the new Indian place, but I'm wanting to. The third place would be my home, in my backyard. And have barbecue, hang out, meet the other neighbors in my neighborhood, and show them what community is.
So I agree with Patty on Seahurst Park, we know it's a gem in our community. I would take them on a tasting tour, similar to what she said. Multiple restaurants, sample across Italian, Mexican, Greek. The Indian place is great, Patty. And then gelato, we'd have to end up with gelato. And accompanying all of that would be a beer tour from Kid Stop to Elliott Bay, to the Tin Room, lots of those. So that would all be one thing. And then I'd probably encourage them to walk around our town square, our farmer's market, see sort of what we have in our community that is some of the burgeoning interest, a combination of seniors and families that are moving into our community and creating a stronger sense of community.
Seahurst for the win, right? Seahurst is just fantastic. We would start a bakery nouveau, I'm so thrilled that they're here. Definitely a tasting tour, I think so. In a perfect world, I would take them to the Highliners Play or Burian Actors Theater, they're amazing group and local, which is fun. And I really love Patty's idea about bringing them home, because you're right, that's where your community is.
I like the idea of building community. For me, that would be, I'm going to differ and try not to boo, but not Seahurst, because it is fantastic, but Arbor Lake. It's small and it's in my area of Burian, and it's something that I feel I can really speak to how much fun my family has feeding the ducks. I'm sorry in advance, we're not supposed to feed the ducks, but that's what we do on weekends. weekends, so maybe I should stop, maybe I shouldn't have said that. But taking them to Arbor Lake, to see small, hidden areas that really make Burian a lot of fun to live in, especially for us with a young family. In terms of food, because you have to, anywhere on 153rd. So 152nd is fantastic, and there are so many businesses there, especially stopping by Burian Press for Coffee would be amazing. But 153rd has so many amazing restaurants that are, they are minority-owned, they are local, they have, a lot of, so many of our restaurants have gotten the start in Burian, Azteca. Believe it or not, I mean, that's a homegrown business, that's a fantastic place to go. I would also, what was I thinking of? I would also love to bring people to, they mentioned Burian Actors Theater, I'm a big fan of the community arts as well. I think that is fantastic and it is needed, but that was it, Cares. Then they can go to Cares, they can see the animals, they can see what we have, the way that we take care of our little furry friends in Burian, it's where we got our dog. But then they can leave with an animal that needs to be adopted as well. And that's the best souvenir to bring home is an extra family member. So that's something that I do.
The question is, do you think Burian has any unsung heroes? And if so, who would you name?
Absolutely. Burian has fabulous engaged members of our community, and there's at least one in this room, probably more. I would call out Deborah George, who does a phenomenal job with Cares and the farmer's market. Laurel Humphrey, who volunteers at endless events, helping with Pride and other events. And I'm sorry if I'm going to overlook any of you. Linda Iscernio, who's the manager at Umpqua Bank, volunteers constantly in our community. Grace volunteers aggressively for Burian Arts. Eric Dickman and Maggie do the Burian Actors Theater. There's probably lots, lots more who I'm forgetting, but there's at least a dozen here in this room. And they make our community work. They set up events, they tear down events, they're there picking up garbage after events, and they don't have to do this, they don't get paid for this. They do it because they know it creates community, so they are some of my unsung heroes.
Gosh, we have a great community. I know those people you named, and they're wonderful. So in addition to those wonderful community members, I would like to recognize Larry Kreip and Debbie Reigner with Quiet Skies. Fighting the fight for us, that's what that's about. JJ back there, Sullivan. She has, this is a woman that won't let Boulevard Park go down. She's pretty incredible. You know, I think that we're all here because we care so much about where we're going and what we're doing and who we're doing it with. And I would be so honored to be able to be your council member, to be part of this group, these people, part of you. That's who I have.
I think first, it would be Kelly Bassett for taking up the issue of our dog park and providing a place for us to come together as a community, for those of us that are pet owners, to enjoy being outside, to let our pups run around and play. I've gotten to meet some really incredible people just by taking Dozer to the dog park, and she keeps it up, which is huge. No one wants to be out there cleaning up what you know happens at a dog park, but she does that. She does it in her free time, she organizes cleanup events, and I think it's fantastic. So she's definitely one of them. I would say Mello De Trey and her boyfriend Eric. I hope that's, I gotta call him Eric and Sam interchangeably, which is horrible. But the reason why is because they saw a need for an additional voice for news in Burian. And they, I really respect people who see a need and answer that, and they take up that cause themselves. I think that's wonderful. And then finally, Scott Schaefer and Teresa for running the V-Town Blog consistently. They take a lot of flack for it, but they manage it. It started off as a hobby, and it's grown into their business, and it's something that they're passionate about. I think that should be commended for continuing to bring the news of what's going on in Burian, what's going on in Seattle and King County, and making it relevant to us, and providing a place for local businesses to have advertising and to get their word out. They are supporting local business. So I think those, those would be my unsung heroes.
I'm not sure if it was plural, I think he said unsung hero. Would be very, very hard in this community to identify a hero, because there are so many. Myself, having volunteered for many years here in the community, know of so many other people who devote their time and energy to make this city what it is, which is a great community. So with 51, almost 51,000 population, it'd be really hard to identify just one. I think we have a collective group, and many of them are here tonight, of volunteers that care deeply about their city and give up their time. Police officers are those in my heart that are unsung heroes. I know that we recognize them once a year, I believe, but they don't get enough recognition, in my opinion.
So this is a reader asking about diversity. Reader says, "Our Burian community is becoming much more diverse religiously, ethnically, racially, with all types of different backgrounds. What are you pledging to do to embrace our increasing diversity in Burian?"
Well, I grew up here, and it's actually always been diverse. I come from a very diverse family, so, I mean, isn't it really about the person and not the color of someone's skin? You know, we are not the ones dividing this community via race. It's not us, okay? What I want to let you know is that we, being in a diverse world, we're so lucky here in America, okay? So I don't focus on the content of someone's skin color, okay? It's about behavior. I would like to let you know that we're not economically diverse, though. We're not diverse in our businesses, or income diverse, in our relationship to our citizens, and that is why we must build our business districts to its fullest capacity. It's job, jobs, our people need jobs. And in regards to diversity, I think that we need to really support our police department as well. We have one gang unit officer. I think that's something that we need to look at. Communication is very important. I know that the Highline School District is bilingual in two or three schools. I think there's Vietnamese and two Spanish-speaking schools, if I'm not mistaken. I think that's incredible. That's wonderful. So those are my thoughts on diversity. It's embracing the person for the person.
So I hold, I hold the belief that in order to see the, to see the community, you have to see all of the community, and that means acknowledging the different colors of our community, the people that make it up, the people that live here, that work here, and that includes our people of color and celebrating that. That includes our LGBTQ community and celebrating that. We had our first ever Burian Pride, and it was fantastic. It was well-attended. It drew people from all over King County and South King County. I met people that were from the city that I lived in as a child in Aberdeen, Washington, that came up just for this. It's drawing people in. That's what happens when you celebrate diversity, and you have to do that if you're going to be a welcoming city. That's something that is in our mission statement for Burian, that we are welcoming, that we do celebrate diversity, and now it's time to actually show what that looks like. So that also means celebrating the vibrant business community that we have, that is owned by our people of color, that is, a lot of restaurants roll on 153rd. What about having festivals that celebrate a culture? It's not going to hurt anybody for the city to celebrate having a strong Latino community. With over 40% of our population now being Latino, we should be celebrating that. We should be supportive and excited about people that have chosen to make their home here, and show that we are excited that they're here, we value them, and we hear them. I think finally also what that looks like in terms of diversity is being accountable to different community groups. When they say that there's an issue, we hear them and we form a plan to address that, whether that means forming a commission or a committee, whether that means having smaller neighborhood town councils that then report back to city council as well and say, you know what, this is what I'm hearing in my area. And not painting the entire city with a one-size-fits-all brush of addressing all these issues, but actually addressing things as they are. I think that's needed. I think people deserve to be seen for who they are, and that includes their ethnic backgrounds and their affiliations. I think we need to celebrate that.
So I've heard person of color a couple of times. So my job, over 80% of my clients are from a foreign country, mostly East India, which is Punjab region, North India, and Korea. What I have done over the last 20 years is I have learned some of the language of the Punjabi people, and also some of the language of the Korean people. I attend their events, I go to their gudwara's, their temples. I immerse myself in their culture, and I think that's what needs to happen. There needs to be more of an immersion, not necessarily an acceptance. I mean, if you're immersing yourself and you're showing them that you care about them as people, it automatically will come, that relationship automatically will come. I would love to see like a Masaki Festival here. We do have a number of Punjabi families living here in this community. Love to see a Masaki Festival. So, help me out, Jimmy, the Day of the Dead, what's it called in Spanish? Okay, so that is a celebration that I've gone to several times, and it is wonderful, wonderful. So again, immersing ourselves in the community with the people of different ethnic, I don't see it as colored.
So we are diverse, and we are getting more diverse, as I said in the beginning of the conversation. And we've actually become something of a destination city because of our diversity in culture. I've talked to numerous folks over the last couple of months who are recent immigrants to our community, they're, that's not the right word, they're recent migrants to our community, and they have moved here because of our diversity. They like that. They like the fact that there's a Filipino market, an Ethiopian market, they can get lots of different flavors of tacos, if you will. And so this is something that we do need to celebrate more. And I think we do a pretty good job of it now, but I'd like to see us think about the cross-section of interests, religions we have, and figure out a way for all of us to learn more about it. Last night at council, we actually approved, as part of our budget, interpretation and translation services as a contract so that we can provide our council meetings in other languages if necessary, if requested. Susan Enfield, Superintendent of Schools, has set a goal that all students graduate bilingual, which I think is a phenomenal goal, because we live in a global society, we need to celebrate that. I'd like to see us have some sort of an international market area in our community, where, you know, there are multiple diverse groceries, whether that's all a district or on the same street, I don't know, but I think, and we are economically diverse. We are one of the most economically diverse. We have very poor people, and we have very wealthy people, and that's something that we need to figure out how to communicate. Thanks.
So we're at the point in the evening where we're almost to closing statements, so this will be the last reader question before we wrap it up. The election is in five weeks. What is your strategy?
A lot of my strategy is the same that it has been. I am meeting as many of my neighbors, as many community members as possible. And I think that's important because you're not going to be a good representative for the city that you live in if you're not getting to know the concerns of the people that live in your city. So for me, that means door knocking. For me, that means every weekend, weeknights, I am out meeting people. I am answering questions. Every Thursday evening, we've been doing this the entire time for the last, I don't know, five or six weeks now. Candidates are welcome to come to the Burian Farmer's Market from 5:00 to 6:30 p.m. There's tables provided, and we stand there and we meet community members. That's increasing accessibility for me. That's what that means. That means I am telling you where I'm at, you can meet me in person, we can answer questions, we can have the hard discussions, and I've had plenty. I have had plenty of hard discussions and asked a lot of hard questions, but it's being engaged in community events, it's being seen as an active member of the community. And it's a lot of soliciting that feedback. That's something that I, if elected, that's something that I am vowing to do, is increase community involvement in what goes on in the community. So that has to be a part of my strategy, because that is who I want to be sitting on your council.
And the Day of the Dead, sorry, can't remember the pronunciation, between now and Election Day. So I will definitely be at both of those. Plus, I host an open house for Halloween, so if you'd like to come, always cookies and hot apple cider. So you're welcome.
Meeting Burianites and talking to them about what their concerns are, walking neighborhoods, as the other candidates have said, door-belling, finding out, which is not only an opportunity to meet neighbors and voters in the community, residents in the community, but to understand where they live. Not only are we diverse ethnically, economically, religiously, but we have a really diverse cross-section in neighborhoods, and they're all different. Some of them, they're amazing pockets of places that you can find. So it's mostly meeting people. I go to a lot of community events and have for many, many years. I participate in all the art events and music festivals, Pride and so on, and I love it. It's an opportunity to meet people. There's, obviously, you'll get literature at different points in time. We have literature, we're handing that out. As Crystal said, many of us have been on the corner by the BECU next to the farmer's market on Thursday evenings, so if you want an opportunity to ask some more questions, come and do that. And I do email. If you email me or you call me, I do respond. And that's something I feel is incredibly important as a council member. I don't block anybody. I look for ways to interact and try to help. So, and my phone number and my website are on the back of my literature, so if there's anyone who wants to get in touch with me, feel free.
Well, door-belling, you know, is the number one way to meet your neighborhood, and I did it two years ago and it was incredible. I'm doing it now, and it's even more incredible. The experience has been amazing. I want to remind this group of these wonderful people here that Patty, Joel, Debbie, and I were working candidates. We're all working candidates. We know, we know how hard it is to work and feed our kids and take care of all that other stuff, but remember, we're also running for your vote. We don't have the ability to come down and meet at the farmer's market because we're working. However, all of us are absolutely accessible. I'm lucky, I'm a business in Burian, I see between 400 and 500 people a month, it's pretty fantastic. So we're doing all of this to meet you, this community. We know that this is a critical election. We know that there are two slates running for your vote, and we're all very passionate people. I think that this has actually divided our community, and I'm very sad about that. So I want you to remember that we're running because we love Burian, we're running because it's the right thing to do, and we're running because we're going to help protect Burian. So I'm going to be knocking on your door soon, so be on the watch for me.
Use your card.
I want to address something. Every single candidate running for Burian City Council is a working candidate. I think that is important to note. As people who are working, I think you make time for what is important. Now, schedules are different, and I respect that. It is hard to get away from work early, it is hard when you have people depending on you, it's hard if you're a business owner and you have clients to serve. I think that is really important to acknowledge. But you also make time for what is important. And for those who choose to show up on Thursday evenings, that's important there. So just to clarify, we're all working candidates, and we all have a stake in this as well. I don't appreciate that comment.
So now each candidate will have up to two minutes. You may applaud after each candidate if you like. And at the end, I believe the director of the facility wants to, Debbie wants to address all of you. So when everything's done, just stick around so that the director of the facility can say some closing remarks. I believe it is...
I started and I'll finish.
So in closing, I will summarize the need for a strong economic business climate to fund the needed services. First and foremost, law enforcement and code enforcement. These are some of the things that I will do if elected. Support all enforcement of laws and ordinances. Support our current and incoming businesses. Continue funding of Transform Burian. Continue funding of Hospitality House. Consolidation of funding for health and human services. Currently, the city is funding 30 different agencies. We need to identify those doing the most good for the greatest amount of people. To achieve these objectives, we need a cohesive team of people willing to put personal agendas aside and focus on the work of Burian for the betterment of all citizens. The polarization must stop. Lauren Berkowitz is responsible for much of the polarization on our council. My opponent is closely aligned with her and has many of the same ideologies. How will this fare for the next four years if we have another Lauren? My opponent has lived in Burian less than four years, which is the amount of time a council member term is. She has little to no community involvement in the city other than to throw her name in the hat for a council run. In closing, let's bring Burian back to sensible, responsible government for the people. I humbly ask for your vote, Patty Jansen, position number seven.
I think after the events this week, we are all a bit more afraid. I find myself afraid in the morning to turn on the news, to look at Facebook, and to see the latest shooting, terrorist attack, hurricane, or even worse. And especially when it's close to home and at events that we might attend. On our own turf, I think we're afraid. Afraid of the changes and differences in the community, in the community we've always known. New people, new different people, different languages, and I think this uncertainty and fear is sometimes pulled inside of us and turns from fear to dislike to frustration and to hate. And I think we all feel this on some level in the face of change and uncertainty. But we can't succumb to the fear and the hate and the polarization. We can't control many of the things that are happening to us, but we can try to manage them with intelligence and compassion and grace. We need to find common ground. We need to recognize we want many of the same things. We want safety in our community, we want opportunities for our kids. Calling each other names, turning our backs, closing off doors to communication does not help. I am committed to work to develop a shared vision, to talk civilly and constructively with anyone on how to provide the best for the most of us. This needs to be a conversation from the right, the left, the center, the top, the bottom, and to talk about how we sustain this community that we love and grow it in creative and exciting ways. I want more locally-owned businesses to keep the wealth in our community and to bring out the talent in our kids. I want entrepreneurs to help create jobs. I want more art and gardens and animals, for that matter. I want nurses and teachers and artists and carpenters to be able to afford to live and thrive here, and I want us all to feel safe. And I want a city council that works on behalf of everyone to get this. I commit to working towards our city's engaged future. Please give me your vote in November, and thank you very much for caring.
Thank you all for coming and listening. I'm asking for your vote, and we look forward to serving you as your elected council member in position five. The chronic dysfunction demonstrated by this council in the last four years keeps rearing its ugly head in the form of partisan politics, personal agendas, and outright disdain for the average Burian citizen and business. I believe that Burian is ready to move forward, out of Seattle's shadow, to become the destination location for residents and businesses alike through a collaborative plan that will include addressing chronic vagrancy, panhandling, absentee commercial and residential landlords, and supporting our police department and our business owners. This in turn addresses our business districts' need for a safe environment to provide their services to the community and their customers through fiscal and common sense policy. Your concerns are my concerns. Safe neighborhoods and successful business districts, we cannot have one without the other. Many of you have come to me and asked me for this. Our community is afraid to voice any form of dissent from the many controversial agenda items for fear of losing their community's standing, their jobs, or being labeled hateful and bigoted, as evidenced by the treatment and harassment I have received and has not been disavowed by my opponent. To reiterate to you, and to be very clear, what a vote for Darla Green would mean. A vote to ban illegal heroin injection sites. A definite no vote on any no-rules or low-barrier shelters. Maximizing our police force through grants and other budgetary means. Adding back our citizens' correspondence to the council packets. Signing a code of conduct and ethics for council members. I vow to work with my co-council members in a thoughtful and respectful way to get the business of Burian done. I will physically attend meetings. You wouldn't think you'd have to say that. I will passionately represent all of Burian citizens for the greater good of Burian. A vote for Darla Green is a vote for responsible, clear leadership, not personal controversial agendas with political ulterior motives that would threaten Burian's viability. I'm asking for your vote, for myself and community leaders Joel Manning, Patty Jansen, and incumbent Debbie Wagner, to restore Burian's sense of community and functional government for a safe and prosperous Burian. I will see you in November. Thank you.
First of all, again, I started by thanking you for coming, and I thank you again for taking this time. It's so important to see community members engaged, and that's what you're doing, and I know having children at home with a babysitter, it can be difficult. So thank you for your time here this evening. As your city council member, I am focused on increasing accountability, increasing access to local government, and getting the feedback from you on what matters to you, not telling you what matters. That means interacting and engaging with you as frequently as possible, and that's more than just community events. That's providing access online for those of the younger generation where Facebook is something important, Twitter is something important. That means allowing that method of communication and free flow of thought to occur, so that we are engaging more of our population. That means focusing on crime and safety in a way that doesn't do more damage to some of our community members while lifting some other ones up. I believe there are ways to address community issues that raises all ships, not just a certain few. I believe in supporting our police force. Even at over 52% of our budget currently in Burian, I believe that they are valuable members of our community, they care about our community, they also need to be held accountable to the community that they're serving. With the endorsement of Sheriff John Urquhart, it's been really helpful to be able to look at how we provide police services and looking at turning it into more of a community police where they're getting to know the communities that they're serving. Looking at providing something like the LEAD program, where it's the Law Enforcement-Assisted Diversion Program for low-level offenses such as drug possession or prostitution. Getting people into treatment, which is very popular to say until you start talking about it when it comes to crime. We don't need more police, we need better programs, we need better community involvement, we need to empower the community to help take care of itself in addition to equipping our police officers to do the job that we've hired them to do. I am all for hearing back from what your ideas are and finding ways to help implement that and work that into our strategic plan. I want to see us look forward, as I mentioned, 20 years down the road, not just four. I want to see us make wise financial decisions. I want to see us make decisions that work well for all members of this community. And finally, I want this to be a place where everyone feels safe and welcome. And that means playing into what some people have described as identity politics. If you are an undocumented person, you are welcome here in Burian. If you are from the LGBTQ community, you are welcome here in Burian. I believe that is important to say and to call attention to because these people are important. Their characters are important, what they bring to the table in Burian is important. And so is every single other person who calls Burian home, who has worked to make this a safe community and an attractive community. Everyone matters here, and that's something that I will continue to fight for as a city council member and not bring more divisiveness to the council while doing so. I really hope for your vote. I would love your vote for position seven on Burian City Council. Please reach out with any questions. My information is available in the back. Thank you so much.
I just wanted to say a real quick thank you to all of you for coming to this lively debate we've had here this evening. And Mayoral Gardens is very excited about being part of Burian community. We've got over 150 Burian residents that live here, and they want to stay active in their community, and we're happy to have these kind of events here at the community, and I'm glad the city is allowing us to do that, and we're happy to do it again in the future. And just wanted to say, if you didn't have a chance to look at the community, feel free to roam around a little bit before you leave, and come visit us anytime.